There we go. Okay, well, welcome. This is the January twenty-fifth meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. So please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Pat, do we have a report of executive?
The board had a very brief executive session discussion with respect to potential litigation in real estate. No decisions were made, no votes of yes.
Thank you. Okay, and that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public here? Yes, sir.
About the Airbnb number five on the list?
Sure.
Hi, I'm going to tell you sorry about just coming from Mark, so.
It's okay.
I'd like to start by saying thank you all for your public service and letting your ears to me for a few minutes. I lived on Honeycomb Lane in Marshall Creek for about twenty-five years, and I love it. One of only eight houses on our road. As my neighbor and adopted mom has said, these are not million-dollar houses, but they are, it is a million-dollar spot. I am here to advocate for myself, my neighbors, and all of the other private roads that make up the majority of residential areas in Middle Smithfield. Recently, I sent out letters, emails, and emails to several township, county, and state officials about the presence of a transient rental on our residential, private, self-maintained, and self-funded road. To be honest, I wasn't really expecting to hear back from anyone, but I was wrong. I received several calls back, and everyone was very nice and really wanted to help. It was refreshing and heartening. I'd like to especially thank zoning officer Sean McGlynn and state rep Tower Probst, which she's supposed to be here, but I guess she's there, for educating me more on the topic and providing me with some guidance. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court has ruled in the case of Slice of Life LLC versus Hamilton Township zoning that a transient rental, or STR, is in fact a commercial endeavor. As a result of this precedent, most municipalities in and around Monroe County have restricted the use of these commercial businesses in residential areas. About a year ago, a house was sold on our road, and to our surprise, it was turned into a short-term rental. The impact was immediate and impossible to ignore however much we tried. The sudden increase in traffic speeding up and down our tiny dirt road without a care, absurdly loud parties and music all hours of the day and night, complete strangers trespassing on our properties, unkept trash floating all over, cars just parking in the middle of our street as if it's their parking lot, lights almost breaking out with neighbors who have had enough, and the list goes on. The state police have been to our road more in the last year than in the last twenty years. Our quality of life, our rights, peace of mind, and safety have been seriously compromised, especially considering the fact that we have no police here and the state police don't respond to ordinance complaints. In fact, on one occasion, my elderly widow neighbor was told by a dispatcher at around midnight, quote, "to go ask the partygoers to quiet down," unquote. Shocking. Would anyone here let their mom go do something like that? I know I wouldn't. Are the five babies growing up on our road that we all love so much supposed to be scared to run off the road, say hi, hang out with the dog, and con my amazing wife into making them snacks? We have no clue who our neighbors will be from one day to the next. Are they good-respectful people? Are they criminals, or are they violent? We did not sign up for that. And then there is the cost of the issues. Our families have lived on this private road for a collective hundred and sixty years. We've been paying for and maintaining this road for decades on nothing more than a handshake and a sense of responsibility to each other. There are no tax dollars spent whatsoever on Honeycomb Lane. My neighbor and friend Toby and I plow the road and the driveways, build a potholes, trim retreats, replace the oil boxes, and deal with other major issues like drainage, washouts. We do it for free, and we're happy to do it. It's a small price to pay for the good thing we had going. We are the young ones on the road now, and it's our turn. Are we expected now to volunteer all our efforts and spend all this money to the benefit of a commercial business that was permitted to be on our private road, private residential road? Are we to stop them when we're free to the detriment of our elderly neighbors that just can't afford something like that? Are we to spend money that we do not have on lawyers to make this commercial business pay their fair share according to the increase in traffic? Do we need to spend our money on increased liability insurance in case a stranger from short-term rental has an incident or decides they don't like how we plow the snow and sues us? It is our property after all, and we are liable. We are liable for it, yet we had no say in the matter. I've never once worried about the neighbors I love taking me to court. No matter how cooperative these commercial business owners may or may not be, there is no promise or effort they could make that would uphold our quality of life or safety. The corporation has no vested interest in the welfare of our community, no love for its neighbors. How could they? They don't know us. Corporations have only one concern: making money. And as such, they do not make good neighbors and don't belong in any residential areas. For the sake of our community, please consider changing the status quo.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I hope so.
Okay, so to sum up, you are asking this board to consider restricting short-term rentals from residential neighborhood?
Yes, especially privately funded roads.
Okay. Well, when we got your letter, I mean, I mean, Mark, you're zoning, and Mike, you might have comments also. I just wanted to get it on the record. When we received your letter, or when I received your letter, I wanted to look into the history of this short-term rental. The property received their permit in April of 2023. There are zero complaints on file for this property.
So the state police have been there many times. I have called many times about it. That being said, I'm not so much here to specifically complain about this house. As far as nightmare stories about Airbnb's that I've heard, I can't lie, this one's not that bad, but it's, it's the larger issue of it. It's the nature of the business doesn't lend itself to a community. We live there, and I gotta go to Mark six days a week. There there are a party about that.
Did you, what I'm saying, there were zero complaints on record?
Were they troopers?
No, from you, from any resident. If somebody is not complying with our zoning ordinance, there needs to be a complaint made to the zoning department.
So I know for sure my neighbor Kathy has come up, and, you know, at one point, that story I was telling you, the two, that midnight time, she came to the best state and said, you guys, you know, I've called, I've spoken, you know, to.
There are zero requests or actions for that. So, so I would just ask that if there's something you would like us to enforce, please submit a complaint or call in and, and submit a complaint.
My issue with it is the larger issue. It's not this guy was walking on my lawn, or this music was loud. It's the very existence of the Airbnb on our road that's a problem. That's, that's the larger issue for me.
Well, to protect your quality of life, if somebody is not complying with our zoning ordinance, we would ask that you would let us know so that we can force it. It's right now there are zero complaints.
I certainly would.
Okay. I mean, you said yourself are friendly, and you've got your callbacks, and.
Oh, no.
By all means, by all means, if somebody is violating our zoning ordinance, you've got to let us know, because right now there are zero complaints for this property.
I was trying to get the police reports from the house. I didn't quite get there because this kind of happened quicker than I thought. I should have brought them. That being said.
Well, we're still here. You can always score them.
I actually, I will. But that being said, again, even if they had no violations of the ordinances in this township, to us, to everybody on my road, it's still a problem. It's still an issue for us. It's not, well, we ended when we lived on that road. When I bought that house twenty-five years ago, I lived there for years before that. Kathy's been there for forty-five years. Cecilia, all of them have been there for decades. We moved there for a reason, because we know who our neighbors are, love or hate them, it doesn't matter, but they were consistent and they were there. This isn't the same thing anymore. It's, it's really, really changed the dynamic. Really has. You know, I'm not a complainer. I, you guys have probably never seen me before, or maybe never see me again. I don't know. But it just, it feels like that Middle Smithfield is lagging behind the restrictions that the townships surrounding us have put in.
Well, actually, I checked into that also because I'm on the Monroe County Planning Commission, and a little less than half the townships allow it throughout the whole township, the whole municipality, and some, a little more than half the municipalities in Monroe County allow it only in commercial and industrial districts. And that's kind of because the flavor of each municipality changes. For example, Stroudsburg is under two square miles. Middle Smithfield is fifty-two square miles. Stroudsburg, as your commercial district, is about twenty-five percent of the town.
Yeah, there are one or two zones in all of Monroe County, including Neiman Tasha, just changed to have no short-term rentals.
That is, that, that is not true. There are, there are ten municipalities that allow it throughout the municipality. There are twelve, there are twelve municipalities that do not allow it in residential. That may be.
Some township in Stroudsburg, Stroudsburg.
That's.
They haven't.
That's.
But they have multi-use commercial.
I have the list. There are twelve that allow them in commercial districts and not in residential districts, and there are ten that allow them throughout the township. So, and, and that, and I understand your point. We, we get it. Each municipality is different. I wouldn't say that we're lagging, but we appreciate your comment, and we're happy to look into it. But, but I, but I, the other, the other thing we did look into is how many complaints we've received on short-term rentals. We have two hundred and seventy registered within the township. And in all of 2023, you can count on one hand the complaints that were about short-term rentals. People in Middle Smithfield Township are, there are more complaints about people complaining about litter on other people's property than there are short-term rentals. That doesn't make your concern any less valid. It doesn't mean that we won't consider things. I just wanted to put it a little bit in perspective, that's all. And I would appreciate if there is a property that is violating the zoning ordinance that you would report it, because we can't fix what we don't know about.
I understand that, and I appreciate it, and, you know, anything you guys do to look into it, move them all forward or in a different direction or something would be helpful to everybody on our road. I know that. And I hope that everybody can just understand. I, I don't know, any of you live next door to an Airbnb or not?
I do.
I do.
And you're great with it, you're fine.
I live in a one-on-one district, just like you.
I love the fact that somebody came in the house now because it sat vacant for so long. And it was just, never knew when it was going to be broken into, never knew when I was going to wake up and see it on fire.
I understand that.
And, and, and just let me finish with that. That, that house itself, I had actually looked into buying about three or four years ago, and I was going to offer the woman about eighty grand because it was a dump, and it just sold for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. People put money into it. They made it a great property. And I think more often than not, the owners are there on the weekends, not rental people. So maybe I'm lucky, but I hear that story from so many other people that have, that have them, that they have six.
In the summer with all my windows open, I have noise. You know, occasionally there's parties and stuff, but I don't. People who live up the road who are not sure are term rentals, I get the same thing. Because it's a second, it's a second home for them. It's not a short-term rental, but every holiday, their families come out and celebrate and, you know, hear it. So, so it isn't that, I'm not unsympathetic. I totally hear what you're, what you're saying. You know, the township does this all the time. We have an ordinance, and then people come in, they give us feedback on it, and then you adjust the ordinance. Like, now with our short-term rental ordinance, the next thing online with it is to adjust it so that all the owners have to have a sound detection device. So when it goes up past a certain decibel, the owner is notified, which our ordinance says the owner has to be, what, within fifteen minutes away to report, to report if there is an issue with it.
Yeah. Just from my view of it, being a landlord for twenty years, not a short-term landlord.
Oh, right, yeah.
You know, there, there's just an inherent lack of control in this business, plain and simple. This, this gentleman that owns this property, all corporation actually, they have sound detection and video cameras and all that good stuff, yet there's been some crazy stuff that happens there.
Yeah.
What do we do? I mean, listen, if I may, like you say, I mean, you know, it's certainly something we can consider as far as restricting short-term rental. But as far as the immediate concern, I mean, I'm here, we're all here, we're saying, I think perhaps, and if, if there is a takeaway for immediate concerns, it would be, A, to try to get a hold of the owner. Okay, so part B of that is to have a contact that's local required. You should have that contact. Get, get that from the owner.
They require it to get the permit, a local contact.
Well.
Yeah.
Correct. Someone has to be nearby, sorry. Okay, and I think that would be beneficial if you had that contact. You know, this way all your neighbors, well, you're complaining, you can call that. And also, from what you're saying, I would suggest that the owner of that short-term rental contribute to your, a road fund. I think that this way, you know, however you divvy it up, you know, at least they pay their fair share for the ongoing maintenance. I think that would help you out and your neighbors out. I mean, I, I know the property you're talking about. I've been to the property. I know it's like thirty feet off Creek Road, you know, so they really don't have any need to traverse. Understood. But, but at least you can get something from them, you know, to contribute to the expense, you know, and the time that you put into it. So.
Yeah, how many ha, you, I think you said you have eight houses on your block, right?
I assure you, seven of the eight are dead set against this. Again, I'm just talking about a B. I'm not, you know, I just say, I, I, these would be two years to be.
I have four houses on my road, and it's not enough to go through a whole HOA, but maybe try doing a road agreement with your, with your neighbors.
I do understand that. So we usually divvy everything up, my name, you know, we're just, that's it. But now, I mean, he's got twice the traffic coming in, and God knows what they're doing.
Well, does he contribute? Does, does this harm?
Again, he thought he needed my numbers, forty percent of the bill, you know, I mean, that would be sitting in with that.
And?
No, and he's never called. We plowed the road, and. Yeah.
Well, maybe you call, call.
Someone must be plowing the road, right?
Well, maybe you call him or something.
Yeah, I, the, the point of it is for me, again, the larger point, that is not the immediate, but the broader point is that we shouldn't have to do this. We shouldn't have to do any of this. Shouldn't we have, have to get a lawyer to write up a contract? Should we have to pay for that to really explain it?
Maybe just start calling the zone, maybe start with calling the zoning office when there's a violation.
Sure, sure.
And start with that.
Grab the ordinance, review it, look at the points. I mean, we were, we were one of the first townships or municipality intended county to have an ordinance. When we had no ordinance, it was the wild, wild west. There were complaints all the time and throughout the county. Our ordinance has been used as a model for other municipalities. So, and, and on the other hand, with that, the, the property owners actually appreciate knowing what the rules were.
Yes, I could see that. I would, you know, want to know the specific rules too. I guess I'm, and I'm, you know, have a thing of quite a bit of ignorance on it. I'm not, you know, I've received quite an education from Tara and the zoning officer. Alls I can say is, is that it has hurt us. It has put us in a worse spot than we were before. And being on a private road, it feels that we were pushed into it, we didn't have a say, which, you know, kind of shits.
The road maintenance, is that it?
It's the cost of it. It's the, it's the social aspect of it, you know. I, I could go on and on. It's all of it. There's not, there's not a single part of it that I can say has been good for us, besides the visitors coming and spending money in our town, which is nice, you know, but other than that, two thumbs down for everyone. Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and we look forward to your input.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, want it. Ma'am's my mom. All right. Oh. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hello, ma'am.
Yes. Well, I figured if he's going to call me ma'am, I'm going to call you ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. One question on, it appears Penda has not considered any of the suggestions that we made that the Hollow Road T-intersection is going to be more dangerous than.
That's correct.
The current?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll just start racking them up, right?
We, we, you know, as you know, I mean, township, all of our EMS, all of our fire departments put in this concern, you know, and, and said that this project is a detriment, is a hazard waiting to happen. It, it basically went into a circular file when it happened up. So I, I, my take on that, Penda doesn't care.
Yeah, that's right. My thought. No, they, you're right.
You know, so.
They did not care.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, if there does, if there is an accident or something happened at that intersection, there is a file full of, of.
Yeah.
Professional.
We told you.
That said, that intersection shouldn't be done. So.
I can, if you need a letter, for me, it depends on, we have one already from Six Eleven, because it's not the NPS, it's Penda. Just, you know, on Six Eleven, and also the Interstate eighty project. I would be more than happy to send it out to the governor, like I've been doing. Just tell me what you want on that, because they really don't care.
No.
No, and it, and the place where there are the most accidents, job security for us, but not, not safe, is that that exact spot, it is not the entrance of Hollow Road here or Holy Cross Road. It's that spot where they want to make that deal.
It would be because you have a caillou, a tree, that you're trying to get these campers out there. Now they're going to have to make a hard left or right, right there on two oh nine, which is not going to happen.
That's the end of that.
If you, if you rub it up, I would more than happen to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you time for it.
And I just want you guys, Antonio has reached out to me, and I told him that you guys are probably one of the most put-together townships. You do such a great job. I really do. And it's a small township that has grown, and you're wonderful, and you're good listeners, and you try to solve issues. And, you know, you know, the advice that I told him, which is true, is that it's a commercial business, Airbnb's. It was, it's held up in court, and commercial uses usually aren't allowed in residential sections. So that's why a lot of the municipalities are switching over, to speak.
Yeah. And they're made up differently. They look different than, than ours. There was somewhere, it doesn't make any sense. But, I mean, I did look at the table of uses. I mean, is a daycare a commercial business? I mean, that could go in your district. There's a number of uses: dog kennels, daycare, stables, all kinds of stuff that can go in R one. So, you know, but anyway, let's just start with make the complaint, you know, when something happens, make the complaint so we can address it.
But that's just.
I'm sorry.
That just gets the Airbnb on my road. That gets the person, but that's, that only solves.
Yes, it does.
You know, that after, I don't know how many complaints it takes. I'm not sure of that, but that doesn't, that solves my problem.
That's correct.
Not anybody else's.
Well, but nobody else's.
Apparently, there is nobody else that might fix this whole township, which I find shocking. I have to tell you. I find that really shocking.
No, there, there were a few that certainly minded it, and they brought the complaints, and then, you know, it's amazing when you tell someone that they're going to lose their permit, three strikes, you're out, the changes that are made in things that people do.
Yeah, because it also doesn't do the owner any good to have negative reviews on their Airbnb website, to VRBO websites. And they do have big party houses. And before, before we had the ordinance, is when we had the rail issues, we had the big homes over in CCP where they were literally having fifty, sixty people there with thirty cars.
There's been a lot to get.
And NPR, and we couldn't do anything. And they ended up going to court.
Right. We also play that, oh, just recently, one of the major realtors in the county has said that short-term rentals are starting to lose their luster, and it's starting to see that people are starting to actually sell those because they're not generating the income that they thought they could get.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, it, that's what's out there right now.
Different neighborhood.
Right. It does. Have a guy that's only concerned about making money, and that's what it is. Stinks.
But again, they're, they're, currently, they're not, they're not, they're not in violation, but if they. But if you send in a complaint and they're in violation, it's three strikes and you're out. They lose their permit.
Is it three strikes?
I think, yeah.
Number?
Okay. You know, they have.
By the way, zoning officer Sean, he, he actually said the exact same thing. You gotta, if, if the township won't respond to it, and the police won't respond to it, stand there at your property line with the camera and record it, send it to.
That's right.
He encouraged me to do that. He said to check subdivision, if there's any land restriction uses, check our deeds if there's land restriction uses. Unfortunately, they didn't think about Airbnbs when my woman, I bought the house from my lovely woman called Gigi, couldn't have thought about that when she subdivide it. So, you know. Here we are.
Oh, sorry. Ma'am, I have one more question.
Yes, yeah.
My, my question was, because I see it on the agenda for the work sessions, is there the JRM update or any information on that?
Yes, we received the study prior to the holidays, and then tried to get the municipalities together for a meeting. But because of the holidays, it took longer to get them together. The municipalities that ordered the study will now be getting together on February ninth to have JLM present to us, and so we can ask questions. After that, we will coordinate a meeting between the municipalities and all the providers that were interviewed for the study to do the same thing. Wash, rinse, and repeat.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your, for your help. Thank you for your help.
I appreciate you, you know, letting me down here.
Just some quick announcements and meeting events. So we have the Person of the Year, which Representative Tower Probst was at, and I just wanted to quickly for the record, thank our sponsors and announce that the Person of the Year ended up being Russell Fisher. So we congratulate him, and the finalists were Dr. Marilyn Brown and Sue Mahusky. And I did want to quickly thank our sponsors because we have one sitting right here. So thank you very much. So, thank you very much, Grimbean and Thatcher, um, for being a, a gold sponsor. Um, SFM, who is Sean, the zoning officer, is, was our platinum sponsor. Uh, we thank, uh, Shealy Insurance and we thank, um, uh, our eng, Gilmore Engineer, he isn't here tonight, but we thank, uh, them for being gold sponsors. And Huffman's Electric and Tag DJs as being bronze sponsors. So we have some programs out on the side and we'll be, you know, posting pictures and stuff as we get to it for it. So we just wanted to make that announcement and thank everybody. Um, also this Friday, uh, we have the committee reports on the side, but I did want to mention that Violet Stand for the Children, it's a thrift shop that benefits um, building a home for children, for foster children, um, is having new ribbon cutting this Friday. So that flyer is over on the side so you can grab it. So, um, I don't know, Mike and Mark, do you have any other announcements or anything? All right, can I please make a motion to accept all of the committee and department reports?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, and those are on the side. So like the historical commission, economic development, all of that. Um, Michelle, is there any correspondence?
A letter was received from Yavali Living's adorable farm, thanking supervisors for the two hundred and fifty dollar contribution for their annual appeal.
Thank you. And do we have any committee vacancies?
We're planning.
You're still, you're still looking to, so just for whoever's here, there's still a vacancy on the planning commission. If anybody would like to, to say, you know, planning on what goes in the township. We'd love our residents to have.
I don't know.
Uh, so you can, you can ask Mark. Mark sits on it and he'll be glad to talk, he'll be glad to talk to you afterwards. Mark is planning and zoning and he, he sits on the planning commission too. So we're happy to hear from you in that way also. Um, and that brings us to the treasurer's report.
Okay, a motion from our general fund, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. From the super cap, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, eight hundred and thirty-nine, excuse me, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine thirteen.
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our golf account, five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents, second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our local fuel account, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, solicitors report, you've been so kind, though.
Uh, so one, there is one item under my report and that's Article Six, Development Options in the draft, uh, Zoning Ordinance Amendment. That we've kind of been going through for the last, uh, several months. We discussed it briefly during your work session. Uh, and really, unless there's some additional questions or concerns from the board, uh, I, I did want to follow up. I think, I don't know if we, uh, came with a definitive, uh, decision on the open space requirement for, uh, the, the resort. Or I'm sorry, the senior active adult development. Uh, it previously are existing, the existing ordinance indicates that for dwelling types A through G, not less than sixty percent of the gross area of the tract shall be retained as open space. That's currently, as the tract changes, it indicates, it would be proposed to decrease that sixty percent and just make it across the board, thirty-five percent of the gross tract area shall be retained as open space. Uh, and remember, that thirty-five percent would include recreation, leisure activities, resource protection, site. Correct.
So, I discussed with Judy and one got the hat and proposed proposing fifty percent. And, uh, half of that could be used for the open space for the community center, rest and, and parking. That way you still have twenty-five percent of it open.
Okay, so say it again.
That we will, that, that's what I, I'm sure that's what I emailed you, right? I don't know if that's, I don't know if fifty percent and then the half of that would be eligible for the community center and parking for.
So fifty percent, so that thirty-five percent of the gross track area would be changed to fifty percent. And then we would add, we'd add provision that half of that, uh, can be used for the recreational facility. Yeah, community center.
Inside.
Or parking, is that right?
And parking. That's what it said the ordinance before, that the parking was included in that, that rec center.
So not less than fifty percent shall be retained as open space.
Yep.
And then you're saying twenty-five percent of that can be used for the indoor and the parking.
Yeah, where I probably plug that in, is if you're looking at it right now, in subsection F one, we changed the thirty-five to fifty. And then in subsection F three, right now it reads development showing blue ground. Yeah, if subsection three indicates, or states, the development shall include an indoor community center with associated improvements and recreation, uh, uses the land occupied by the community center and other indoor and outdoor recreational facilities and the parking needed to serve them may count towards the minimum open space. And I'll, I'll include something for the effect of not to exceed half of the fifty percent requirement. So the fifty percent will go in F one, the half language, uh, for the rec center would go in subsection three.
Well, that's a lot better than thirty-five percent.
And then the other one was right after, uh, thank you, all those.
Yeah, so there is another section in the senior, in the senior active development use section. There's being proposed a number of the specific dwelling types and the, and the restrictions and requirements associated with those specific dwelling types.
What number is that?
Uh, subset, or section sixty-two dash sixty, housing types. There's a good portion of that section that's being proposed to be deleted and I just brought up the question, you know, are we sure we want to delete those? And I believe it's one of the attachments or appendices.
Attachment, and actually in the first paragraph, but zero, two, six, two, zero, sixty. And Reddit says the dimensional requirements for each housing type are provided in Table two hundred, attachment eight. Right, so all the language is in the attachment.
Right.
Okay.
So.
So it doesn't need to go here?
Yeah, no. Well, I, I don't, I don't have that attachment.
That, that attachment.
But I think Judy is gonna forward it to me. But the, the, the real, I just want to make sure everyone understands the distinction. I think without having it, I, what I suspect that attachment is, is the, the requirements for those uses any, for those types, those dwelling types anywhere in the township, right? So I think the question is, are you okay with those same restrictions and requirements associated with those dwelling types to be the same for the se, the senior active development use? So, for instance, the single-family detached dwelling housing type. In attachment eight, I suspect it has the general requirements associated with a single-family detached dwelling unit throughout the township. I just want to make sure that the intent is that those general requirements for that housing type would still control for a single-family detached dwelling in, uh, or that's being used as the, in a senior, what's the term? The senior active adult development. I mean, you don't want any specific provisions for those dwelling types within an actual senior active adult development. Do you understand that?
Yeah, so, so we want to look at the attachment, where the goal is for that. So it's got a lot of things like dimensional requirements, front yard, set back, rear yard, inside, there, that is the.
Right, so if the answer is you're okay with those same dimensional requirements being the same for this dwelling, these dwelling types as a senior active development, then it's, then it's okay. But if you want them to be different for one reason or another.
No, that's how it was written before.
Okay?
So we'll take a look.
Yeah, when I get attachment eight, I'll kind of cross-reference and if there's, and the only reason I say that is sometimes you look at these senior active developments and it's more, they're more of, uh, like clustered, right? Especially when you're requiring a significant amount of open space, so they kind of put everything closer. So that would, uh, that's why I'm wondering if there are different dimensional requirements associated with these dwelling types and this type of development as opposed to generally throughout the township.
Okay, so I only get that from Judy, you have to come here and change.
But other than those two items, I think the rest of it, I don't think there were many comments or questions during the work session discussion on the rest of it. Uh, you know, it includes the airport, uh, districts, um, conservation, development. Other questions or comments further from the board?
No.
Okay, so I'll make that change with respect to the fifty percent, uh, for the open space and the half of that to be used for the community center and parking. And then I'll, once I get attachment eight from Judy, I'll kind of cross-reference and see if there's any further discussion needed. That's all I have for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so there is no engineer's report. We don't have the engineer here tonight. Um, no old business, and that brings us to new business. So, um, I would make a motion to authorize the township solicitor to begin the process of renewing the LERA.
Sure.
Which, uh, we have, Debbie, you were there for the first time also when we did this on the school board. I think you were on the school board at the time.
No, I was on township supervisor.
Well, when we went to the school board.
Well, you were on the school. First started with LERA, I was.
When you wrote, when we were writing the ordinance, yeah.
When they were first talking about it.
Yeah.
But then I was on the school board when we came with it, yes.
So motion is, anything else? Any other comments or, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, so what, what that'll entail, just so the board's aware, it adopted your ordinance, so that's in, that's on the books. Uh, it'll start with me sending a letter to both the school district and the county, just, uh, reminding them that the current resolution of the past expires in twenty-two, I think it's June or July of twenty twenty-five. And that the township's asking them to start the process to renew those resolutions for another. Should I, do you want me to suggest the timeframe to renew them for another ten years or just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want me to definitively put in there a timeframe?
Correct.
Okay.
Was it five years the first time?
Yeah.
No, the, it, yeah.
Well, the first thought.
It's a, you're thinking the, how long the LERA itself lasts for a business, right? Yeah, that, but there was ten years when this could be, um, in existence.
Okay.
So somebody in twenty, at the end of this year, that, or this expires June of twenty twenty-five? If somebody in May of twenty twenty-five was approved for the LERA, they'd still have the five years, but after that, no new applicants.
Right.
And just so it's clear, it's not just, it's like stepping, right? The first year it's so many, so much percent, then it goes down, goes down, goes down for five years.
It's really like six years and the first year is zero. And zero in taxes.
And just so, because I know when I sit in a different room, somebody's gonna ask the question.
Right.
Uh, is it the same locations that you're going to apply it to?
Yes, the commercial.
Is it the properties? Everything stays the same? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the properties are set, well, the, the area is set by the township's ordinance that was adopted back in, uh, I have it somewhere, but a while ago.
Right. Uh. They revised it to include.
You did. There was a slight revision to include that additional property.
Right.
Um, but that's set by the ordinance and there's no, no one's touching that that I'm aware of. This is simply to, the issue is the, the district and the county's resolution, kind of agreeing to do this as a ten-year term and that term runs in June of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
We thought we'd start early.
Yeah. Or you can locate it around.
Yeah, okay, so thank you, Pat. And then the next, I think this, this is you, that's the next one.
Yeah, the motions are, what's the other, the second tender to advertise, except it's for spring, fall, time to fill that one. So, green bean, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, spring, uh, fall, in October, eleven, twelve, all year and our board day episode.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, too.
The motion is that resolution one, twenty-four, dash six, which is the green light go. Uh, traffic signal approval for two oh nine in Business Drive.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion, that resolution one, dash twenty-four, seven, which is two oh nine in Oak Grove.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion of that resolution one, twenty-four, dash eight, which is two oh nine in Sullivan.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion of that resolution one, dash twenty-four, dash nine, which is two oh nine in School Drive.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion of that resolution one, dash twenty-four, dash ten, which is two oh nine and Municipal Drive.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. The motion of that resolution one, dash twenty-four, dash eleven, which is two oh nine in the number four road.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve, uh, the agreement to extend the green light go completion deadline.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just, uh, to remind the board, in doing so, the agreements and the forms will depend on, the township's gonna be the owner or operator and any responsible for the maintenance of all those traffic.
That's correct.
Um, we put this on the agenda just so that we have this in as many places as possible. And that is the, uh, Monroe County Election Board, um, divided two districts into four, for Middle Smithfield for, for voting. So what used to be, uh, Middle Smithfield West is now Middle Smithfield one and two. And what used to be Middle Smithfield East is now Middle Smithfield Districts three and four. And on our website, we put the map along with the list of the polling places where you go. Um, we understand that people, uh, that are voting in a different place are receiving their new voter ID registered, uh, cards in the mail now with a list, so we just.
That's why I didn't receive one.
Yeah, so Michelle received one, but you did not receive one.
Two hundred yards from Michelle did not.
Did not receive one.
Playing different voting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we kind of just wanted everybody to know that. We'll just keep saying it, um, just to get the word out there. Okay, and then the next thing for discussion is the sewer department fees, interest and penalties. Um, so we wanted to formalize, we have an internal policy on, uh, sewer department fees and things that are waived or, and how we work with customers to get them to, um, to help them pay their, their bills. Uh, so this is, Mike and Mark, this is exactly what I read to you in the Board of Supervisor workshop on January nineteenth. I just wanted to make sure that, um, we are in consensus with the waivers below. So the one-time grace fee, um, and all of that. So, does anyone have any comments, questions or changes on this policy for the sewer department? We have sewer payment plans. As you might remember, we used to have payment plans one through five, excuse me, six. And they were condensed. Uh, and there are payment plan guidelines of what they have to do for that. And if they are unable to afford the down payment, sewer department coordinator then work. Sewer department coordinator then works with the customer. Uh and comes up with a plan. Uh they have the authority, the sewer coordinator has the authority to negotiate a monthly or weekly amount that will be affordable to the customer. It is then uh brought to me for approval. Um and the Board of Supervisors, as in the case of the sewer EDU relinquishment, that was recently on the agenda. So. Okay, any comments, questions, input? On what was discussed with you on January nineteen? Okay, Mark? Okay, all right, so. I mean, if you'd like to vote on this draft, we could also do it as a vote on this. I would like to make a motion to formalize this internal policy and have it on record.
Do we need a vote for a policy?
I don't, I don't think we needed one before, but if it makes you more comfortable.
I don't agree.
Okay, all right, so we are all in agreement. That's just, that's great.
Okay, is there any public comment on anything? I have one more question.
Yes.
Is there any plan to put a meter on the municipal driveway?
That's all part of the upgrade. Our only intention is to get the whole two oh nine car to talk to each other. From Bushville to two oh nine, uh after Rudy.
I think that's a, that was a safety.
Pendant wants to make sure they can control all the stop lines.
Correct.
Yeah. They're gonna have to walk it because, you know, they're gonna have that traffic jam and nobody can make a left turn with their. Rep RBs.
I don't know if there's light there.
That's true though.
Right.
You're gonna have to stop that and wait for.
Just call the ride and go.
Exactly.
Yes, Representative. Is there, is there PA American Water in Middle Smithfield Township?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so can I just tell you, I spoke with them two days ago. They, um as you know, they wanted to really raise the rates.
Yes.
So there's two public hearings, um I know specifically one is at Tannen. Um let me get the date here, it's not tomorrow, it's next week and I'll have that ready before I leave. But they're doing a one o'clock and a six o'clock, but what happens is, you know, they're asking for X amount of percentage of increase. They have to go through the PUC, the PUC may say absolutely not, or they may say, well, you can't have that much of an increase if you could have a ten percent increase. At that point, what PA American Water is doing, and they're gonna send me the breakdown of the cost. They are giving assistance to anybody that is two hundred percent above poverty level. So when they said that, my question was, what about the family of four that's not in on poverty level? But they're living paycheck to paycheck, it's expensive to live in Monroe County, right? So he said that they're um coming up with plans of like a family of three that makes, just say seventy five thousand dollars or less. Though they're gonna have assistance for them. So if you're two hundred percent above poverty level, there's absolutely gonna be assistance for PA American Water. If you're, if you're not in poverty and your income shows you're not in poverty, but you have maybe four children or three children or two children. Um they're doing levels of income versus how many people are in the household or assistance. So you could not be at the poverty level, but you could be living paycheck to paycheck.
Right.
You're a big family.
Right.
So they're sending me over what the breakdowns are gonna be, as soon as I get them, I'll email them to you at that.
I would love to post it on our website.
Yeah, yeah, so they decide to give them a week to get them that. So anyone that asks PA American Water, even if the rates go up, which, you know, we're hoping we're gonna try to like minimize that. But even if they do, there's gonna be assistance for basically um people who are below the poverty level and also. Families of, you know, who have kids or dependents at home, so it's a good thing. So I just wasn't sure how big in of PA Water was.
Well, we have it, it runs them down, I was just trying to look up, uh is this on their website where the public hearings are? We have, we have it substantially down two oh nine, so a lot of our businesses are hooked up to PA American Water. And then there is Country Club of the Poconos that is off of PA American Water also.
Department to Mount Nevo.
Yeah, the part, that's right, the apartments at Mount Nevo. But not so much because we can't shut their water, uh shut their water line. No, there's sewer, yeah.
It's on Thursday, February first, there's a one o'clock session at the fun house at Tannen. And that's a public hearing and there's another one at six o'clock at night. But there's also, I believe, some Zoom links, so um tonight when I get back home and I'm on the computer. I know we published it on Facebook.
Oh, okay.
So it's on Facebook as well, but they are going to try to work with, you know. Different levels of income to try to assist.
Yeah, there was that and there was the med ed increase also. Yeah, utilities for everybody.
Yeah.
Um is there any other public comment from anybody or any other helpful information? All right, Mike's favorite motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you all.
Okay, so.